Good evening. The September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four special meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section three-three-one-three-point-one-five of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Ms. Jessling, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Iapolo?
Here.
Mrs. Marchaza?
Present.
Mrs. Payne?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
And Mrs. Jessling is present.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
We have to assign me formally as treasurer pro town since Mr. Wade is not here.
Ah, thank you, thank you. Could you help me with procedure on that? Are we, we don't vote on that. I'm just appointing you as president.
I believe so.
I'm appointing Ms. Jessling as our, as our pro temp tonight, and she will be taking our minutes and calling our roll. Thank you.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have minutes from the September tenth special board meeting and the September tenth regular board meeting. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Iapolo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jessling is yes. Mrs. Marchaza?
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes. We have an executive session on the agenda this evening to discuss employment of a public official, and when we reconvene, we will have our code of conduct discussion listed under board business. Do I have a motion to move to executive session?
So moved?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
And that was Mrs. Iapolo?
With me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Marchaza.
Yes.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jessling. And the time is?
And then Mrs. Iapolo?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was gonna have you second, but no. So we are five, five zero, and it is five thirty-three PM.
Thank you.
I'm just taking the housekeeping pieces.
Seven oh one works.
I got that.
All right. We now have the Board of Education report and recommendations, and under board business, we are going to have a discussion on the code of conduct.
So I'll give you a couple of items here to start with. Actually, I printed off the code of conduct, so everybody has it. This again is the, um, the document that we have to post in all of our schools, and it also has all of the references to student discipline within our policy manual as well. So there's, there's kind of a lot to it, but I, I thought I would at least point out a couple of quick items that I know we've discussed previously and just open it up for comments, and I'll take notes and figure out what we need to do next. So as a starting point, just for the code of conduct piece to the puzzle, if you flip to page four, what, what the code of conduct actually does is it gets into a little bit more of the descriptor of what each of the behaviors might be so that we can see what the definition is. And then as you go through each of the policies, some of those things are then referenced as well. So these things are, are labeled with like an A through, and it gets into like double A, yep, all the way through double E are the different types of behaviors that we have addressed in the code of conduct. So it starts with disruption of school, which is letter A. B is damage, destruction, or theft of property. The one, a couple of things that I did want to highlight, though, letter C, threats and intimidation. This is one of those areas that we're ramping up consequences here this year. And again, typically, there's a suspension involved in some of these. There will also be several that will have recommendations for expulsion as well. So you can see what that definition is there. The, the other one that I know we're, we're focusing in on here this year is letter E with the use or possession of tobacco slash nicotine products. It actually dips into letter F as well, the use or possession of alcoholic beverages or drugs, and this is where the vaping pieces will come into play. Again, ramping up some of the consequences here this year for that, making sure that vaping is a suspendable offense. And then also, because we've talked about this as well, having the recommendation to the insight program, which is coming out of our new contract with Signature Health, which is, you know, smoking cessation, some of that use prevention type of, of programming there, so that they're not just getting a consequence, but what, what's the support that we need to give each of those individual students as we're addressing some of the vaping challenges here in the district?
Is there a reason why the SRO wouldn't give a regular ticket, a citation for smoking, since it's against the law?
Yeah, it's interesting that, I, I think some of our neighboring districts are looking at that as well. So again, part of our conversation here today as we're going through these, if that's something that we want to consider, we can also have those conversations with, you know, Menor Police Department, Menor on the Lake PD, just to see, you know, what sort of criminal action might be part of something like this as we move forward. Typically, if there's a vape that's involving some sort of drug, that's, that's kind of an automatic piece to the puzzle, is involving that SRO. But oftentimes, it's a challenge to, to actually find that substance on them at that point in time.
And did we do something about sensors in the restrooms?
Yeah, so that's one of the other things that we're actually looking at our Title Four money out of the, the federal funding that we get this year. Mrs. Bonis has set aside some money for school safety components, and one of those things would be the potential addition of some more vape sensors. I believe they were used in the past at one point, and I don't know if they're turned off or not working, but we're looking at how that might come back into be.
Do we have enough staff to, because I would assume this, okay. Right, but.
You don't have to finish the sentence.
Because I would assume at first, I mean, implementing something like that that hasn't been done, it's probably gonna be a pretty large influx of citations or whatever, you know, you wanna call it, and then it will trickle once they see that we're being consistently applying the discipline.
The one other tool that we have now that we did in the past as well are those handheld metal detectors where, you know, instead of, that's gonna cut down on the search component fairly quickly too, you know, if they just do a quick scan with that, they're gonna be able to identify right away that, yeah, you've got something, no, you don't, and typically those take more.
When are those, or are they being used already?
The handhelds are, we passed that back in January timeframe. They're being used, I wouldn't, I don't know if regularly would be the right term, but they are being used.
Okay. Mr. Heath, I have been talking to some local districts, and, and some of the districts are going the legal route. So someone has, they especially drugs, you know, it goes right to their SRO, and then it goes through the court system. So parents are involved because they have to go to court, there's a fine, there's, you know, criminal, criminal charges. But I had heard a rumor that Lake County doesn't participate in this because the Lake County courts do not support that. Do you know?
I, I don't know that for a fact, but that, that'll be something that we'll, we'll take a look at here, just as we're looking at those consequences if we wanna get, you know, police involvement in this right away. That kinda goes back to the, the SRO contract piece to the puzzle too. I had some conversations last week, and there, there's a lot of, a lot of language that we're trying to work through still with regard to police involvement in some of the student discipline pieces to the puzzle. A lot of that revolves around what's a felony, because if a police officer observes or is involved in something that rises to the level of a felony, they have an obligation to act versus something that might be more of a misdemeanor where they don't necessarily have the, the obligation to act in that regard. So that's kinda what we're playing with, with that contract right now.
So that would play into this whole piece as well?
Potentially playing into this too.
So you would probably need direction from us on if that would be something that we would want you to include in the contract.
And perhaps the juvenile?
Yeah.
Court system in Lake County?
So we can find that out both from the Menor Police Department and then the juvenile court system, you know, what is our standpoint here in Lake County with some of this?
You know, a law, but if it's not enforced, it's worse than having no law at all.
I agree. Is that the majority of the infractions in our bathrooms right now? Are kids sitting around and vaping? This is what I'm hearing. Kids sitting around vaping.
We hear that as well. Yeah, as far as the, the numbers go, and I'll share a couple of those things here in a second too. I wouldn't say it's an outrageous number by any stretch of the imagination, but again, how many times are, are students vaping in there and not caught is the other piece.
Right.
And it's always been a concern that kids who aren't going to be involved in any misbehavior are reluctant to use the restroom. If there are people in there that are breaking the rules, they don't wanna get caught up in that. And so it's an injustice to those kids who are doing what they're supposed to be doing, that they don't feel that they can utilize the facilities. It just always has seemed so wrong.
Yeah, I agree. I know we've sort of jumped right into bathroom safety, but I, I do wanna hear, you're gonna present the data for us, Mr. Heath, that you should?
Yeah, and it, it's interesting when you look at some of the data. I don't think I have a slide in what I shared with, with the board here earlier, but that is one of the things that we can see in EduClimber now, is where things are taking place, and restrooms, I think, is the number one location.
Before we do get into the data, because I am eager to see it, I, I have to ask, because I wonder myself, and some other parents have asked me to, and I sense that it's probably a staffing issue, but I know when I attended Menor High, we did have bathroom monitors. They stood outside with walkie-talkies. I don't know if you remember this.
Oh, yeah.
They had walkie-talkies, and, you know, they didn't go into the bathroom unless there was an issue, or they smelled cigarette smoke, which I think was more common back in when I went to school. But, um, you know, we had similar challenges that we have today, so is that something you're exploring, or is it even possible with the staffing we have?
It's gonna be a challenge with the staffing that we currently have. I know we had one security individual that, that stepped away last year, and it took us forever to get somebody hired in that role. They are typically gonna be spending a lot of time down in the student center, cafeteria, basically. We do have them kinda monitoring specific areas of the building. F Wing is one of those newly identified areas that they're gonna be spending a lot of time in. You know, so just having them stationed outside of restrooms, we don't have nearly enough people to do that.
Yeah, I think I recall them, some of them being substitute teachers even, and, and of course, that's a lot to ask of our subs and our teachers. I'm just, this is what I remember from when I was in school, but I understand, you know, staffing is tough, and we're all stretched pretty thin. Just, you know, somebody, some presence there rather than none at all, I think alone would, would help at least a little bit, but I hear you on the staffing challenges.
And the, the other nice thing about the, the tool that we use to kinda monitor some of this, again, EduClimber, is you can look at the time of day, you can look at the locations, and again, we can start to be a little bit more strategic with where we station individuals from a security standpoint, just based off of that information. So that obviously is something that we look at twice a year, at the very least, but can be something that we kinda push a little bit more as well.
Great, that would be great.
So I've got that information.
Do we have a loitering, you know, policy where in the bathrooms, I mean, get in, get out, even if just guidelines for the students, and that could be a quick way to?
That's a good point, yeah.
Keep them moving? I don't remember ever seeing one, but maybe, yeah.
I don't, I don't think we have loitering in the code of conduct.
Because that's, that's what they're doing in there, you know?
Yep. I've seen eating.
Right.
Eating in the bathroom.
Eating in the restroom is interesting.
Yeah. There's also a tool that somebody shared with me, I didn't find this myself, it's called Hall Pass. I don't know if any, have you ever heard of it? You've heard of it? Yeah, where it's like, it's a tracking system, so when a student, you know, leaves the classroom, I think they scan out or something, and it kinda tracks where the student is or how long they've been gone. So to your point about, you know, keeping kids moving in and out of the bathroom, that could be something we wanna explore. I have no idea how much it is. Somebody sent it to me to take a look at, and it seemed interesting.
Also, to go back on that, sorry, to go back on that, um, point with hall monitors, if we can't do it all of the time in every bathroom, can we hit key bathrooms? I don't know if we have the staffing, you know, maybe around the lunch study hall time, the bathrooms right around it, and just kind of watching the area that, no, you can't walk down the hall to the bathroom, you're using this one, we're having people stand nearby. I don't know if that's a possibility there.
Yeah, and I think the one, typically, we're not seeing any issues in, well, shouldn't say any, but we don't see the issues in those restrooms right near the cafeteria because there are so many adults there, but they will go elsewhere in the building.
Have they ever shut bathrooms down, just locked them?
Yeah, there are, there are a couple of, I think the ones down the athletic department hallway have been locked during the course of the school day. So, yeah, there are some that are shut down.
Are we still assigning certain bathrooms, certain halls? Is that the thing? I know that, that's what they did last year.
Let, let me double check. I'm not sure if Jason's, or if Mr. Crowe's been doing that again.
That was creating overcrowding, and then I think that's where we're getting, yeah, more issues. And I think that, I just, I think.
I'll double check that.
I think if, it's, it's not a, it's a staffing issue, it's not, we're not talking a funding issue, correct?
Correct.
It's just hard to, we gotta, we gotta recruit some.
Okay, so our main issues, I'm, I'm looking at the information you sent us, the major incidents and minor incidents, and what, what, is there, are there ideas of what we could do to help?
And just to finish off this, the code of conduct piece, that I know we're, we've had a lot of our conversations, you know, looking at fighting and, and what that consequence is. Typically, that's gonna be three to five days out, first offense. They've been leaning towards five days a little bit more. Might be a little less if we're dealing with a student with a disability based on IEP considerations there as well, but that's one of the things in letter M. And then the, the final one is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Again, harassment and intimidation kinda lead into that mean behavior data that we're currently reporting on the, on the website now. And then anything that is a confirmed bullying component typically is gonna be a five to 10-day suspension with possible recommendation for expulsion as well when we get those confirmations. And again, remember that bullying is, has that high threshold of a definition where it's gotta be repeated and ongoing, but when we get to that point, that is something that is treated pretty extensively.
I know we've kind of talked about this in the past too, and we've heard it from when we go into the classrooms for the AP and normal government class, but the in-school suspensions, I know we heard it even in the executive session about that too, about, from a family, you know, that they would like to see that implemented more. I agree with that. I think that out-of-school suspensions right now for some children are easier than it would be to, in-school suspension, take away the electronics completely and kind of see how that goes. They used to do it, and now they don't really do it anymore. So is there a reason why it stopped, and are we looking at implementing that again?
Implementing which part again?
The in-school suspension.
The in-school, yeah, sorry. So we, we do have in-school, it's called in-school restrictions. Anything that's a suspension is, you know, you're out of the building. So there's different language that they use now, but the in-school restrictions, and you'll see that in some of the, the data here as well. It's, it's not used nearly as much. Oftentimes, they'll do it maybe on a, you know, maybe a period-by-period basis, but that is something that I think we need to have more conversations around. Again, staffing is gonna be part of the issue with that too, you know, who's gonna be staffing that on a, you know, a period-by-period basis at the high school, middle school level, whatever it may be. But I think that's one of those things that we wanna look at. The other thing, and I, I kinda tasked our secondary administrators back in, in early June when we started our conversations around discipline with them, is that we wanna look at some of the alternatives as well. I think it's almost a combination of things that we need. You know, obviously, if you've got a, a behavior that rises to the level of a suspendable offense, that suspension needs to be there. But, you know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a two- or three-day suspension with some additional time in an alternative setting where we're working through, you know, academic components, social, emotional components, behavioral components with that particular student to give them those supports that they need. And maybe that's in addition to the two or three days that they're out of school, maybe they've got an additional seven or eight days of this alternative location where we've got those individuals there to support what their, what their behavior issue was, so that when they do finally come back to the, the comprehensive setting, that a couple of things happen. Number one, whoever was the quote-unquote victim of that behavior hasn't seen that individual for two weeks now, as opposed to, okay, we had an incident on Monday, and you're back in school on Friday, and you're sitting in the same class with me again. But then number two, we're also trying to get to the root cause of that behavior and resolve that issue, and that's one of those things that we, we put in front of our administrative team to start talking through and identifying what those things are. We've got some of that in place for programs with our students with disabilities, you know, some of our emotionally disturbed students that, you know, might not be able to, you know, really fit into that comprehensive high school setting or middle school setting, you know, we, we make it smaller for them. So that's one, one possibility for them, but we don't have that for all students. So how might we create some things? Maybe it's at, at a different site, and we've got the Garfield Building that isn't fully utilized. We've got some of our preschool kids there, but, you know, could we have one or two high school students on the first floor of that building doing some of their, their work to kinda get ready to come back to the, to the middle school or the high school setting? That may be something that we could look into.
There's something also I do, could we, could we jump into the data, though? Like, I, I just feel like the data's gonna help set the table for our conversation, so perhaps could we, could we just let him dive? Because I do wanna come back to the school suspension topic, it's a really good one. I just kinda wanna see, I can't actually read all the, the text on this slide.
Yeah, it's really small, so I've got.
Yeah, can we get it up there? Because I can only get on my phone. It's so tiny, I can't read it.
Can you email the name?
Oh, okay.
My computer's gonna die.
I know, I can never get an email here.
Do you want me to email it?
Yeah, I can, I also could, if you, whatever you guys need.
I send, just send it to you, Paul.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I, some of the, some of the numbers and the wording is really, really small, especially if you're looking at it on a cell phone, Ms. Jessling.
But that's what this is for, you just make it real big.
It's actually smart.
Yeah, like, I can read it now.
But yeah, we can kinda go through some of the data slides here. And then if there are, like, one thing I'll, before we even jump in, we're trying to find more of the cell phone data. It doesn't live in EduClimber like that, but we might be able to pull some things out of Infinite Campus with the, with some of the language that we use in the, the actual incident reporting, so I'm gonna work with our IT department to try and get some of that, because that obviously will.
Well, maybe we could even look at timeline too with.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, will, will you have it in EduClimber going forward? You just don't have last year's? Is that what you mean? We'll be able, because they're tracking it now, right?
Within EduClimber, it doesn't get the, the narrative piece to that particular incident, it will just use the code that was utilized, and that's, again, some of the other work that our administrative team went through this, this summer, was really looking at the coding and comparing it to the code of conduct definitions so that they get very specific with that now.
Is it just like minor defiance or minor disruption? What is it being put under? Okay.
Yeah, so they're getting into that a little bit more.
I see it as such a big picture, where if you don't have your phone, you're not texting people to meet you in the bathroom, where there's bullying issues, where there's drug use, where, you know, so.
Social media.
The, the social media, so it might be interesting to just look at the things that we're already tracking and see if they dropped.
Yeah.
You know, once that policy, I know we've had, I know we had the policy all along, but it was really like a renewed.
Right.
Yeah, so we can look at that, because that started, I think, in January, so we can go January through May and have some, some second semester data for us.
That'd be helpful for Rose and I too, for OSB.
Yeah, I figured you could use that in your, in your presentation.
I mean, you can already see, you know, it's not major, but like, a decrease in physical aggression, physical injury, and I.
So you're on this one, I think. So if, yeah, Maggie, because you're facing the wrong way.
I can see pretty good on here, I just wanna know the number you're on.
So we're on, we're on slide three.
Thirty, okay.
As I'm looking at my computer. So in, in the minor incidents, again, we had a little uptick in attendance and truancy pieces, about the same at the bus violations. The defiance, non-compliance obviously went up significantly based on that bar graph as well, as did cheating, which the cheating probably can be attributed to the rise in
ChatGPT.
ChatGPT and AI stuff.
And phones too, though, because a lot of data shows that when you take away the phone, the cheating goes away.
So that'll be an interesting thing.
Yeah, right. Well, that was, is that, that was pulled recent?
So this is comparing twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, so this would have been at, for the end of last school year, is the blue.
That's, I thought, okay, thank you. So it went up.
You got the minor inappropriate physical contact in there, and then obviously minor disruption. Disruption's kinda that catch-all that's inevitably gonna be one of the highest ones that we see.
Just to clarify, you said this, so the blue is twenty-three, twenty-four, so that's not this current school year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just, this is last year's data. And again, these are pulled straight from the, the work that we do with our district leadership team in February and June each year. We dig into the, the discipline data a little bit, so I pulled these slides straight from there.
Fiscal, like, year and June, is, or is that what, we're looking at like a July one to June thirty?
Yeah, so these are academic years.
Academic year, okay. So then this twenty-four would be up until May of last year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. So that, and that's why we can look at January of twenty-four to May of twenty-four, in particular with cell phone stuff, to, to get an accurate data, a point there for us.
What's the consequence for defying the cell phone policy?
We expel them now.
Just the phone or the kid goes to?
A lot of it's gonna be a warning as a starting point, and then they, they kinda escalate if it's, you know, second offense, third offense, fourth offense type thing.
Could we buy some of those sleeves?
The yanders?
There's a couple different versions. That, so we have a hundred of them, if you, two or three times.
Teachers have them, it's given your warning and.
Yeah, it's locked up for the day.
For people who don't, for the kids who are consistent offenders and not, you know?
Yeah, so.
And I know what Jason did at the high school, what Mr. Crowe did at the high school was he, he bought a lot of those, like, little shoe things to.
Yeah, the shoe organizers.
Put the phones in, in classrooms, and some of the teachers are using those.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I'll be perfectly honest, I, I was in a district that used the sleeves in a, just in a small environment, and.
They didn't work.
No, and the kids would put a burner phone in there and be done.
That's what I wonder, yeah, you bring a. That's what I wonder, yeah, you bring a dummy and then you still have, the real phone is in your pocket.
Or they'll, you know, they'll take the sleeve and put the phone in there, okay, yeah, it's locked, and really, it's not, and they just.
Yeah, I've had them put a dummy phone in the shoe thing as well.
Yeah, and it's tough, too, because if a parent is like adamant about, I want my kid to have it in the case of an emergency.
Yeah, that's always part of the issue, too.
But if it is our policy that once you have offended.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if it was.
And then we, well, you've had your warning.
The privilege is revoked.
I saw it with, you know. My question with with this data, is this district-wide?
Yeah, this, the, this is the district-wide data. Again, within EduClimber, we can really get into the details. We can break it down by building, um, break it down by demographics, uh, again, break it down by time of day, day of the week, uh, month of the year, you know, when all these different offenses are taking place. It's it's a really powerful system to be able to dig in. And that, that's what our our schools are doing, is they're looking specifically at their data and making adjustments based on what they need to do in their buildings, based on the time of day and those sorts of things.
Is some of this just a rise because there's been more attention paid? More, more things are documented, more things are noted, where it's not necessarily a huge jump where it's tripled or quadrupled in, uh, one in the center there, but it's just being reported more consistently?
That's part of it, too. I, one of the things that we noticed, um, my first year, so a couple of years ago now, was, um, not all principals were reporting things in the system. You know, they they had their their incidents and they had their consequences, and they were following through with things in their buildings, but they weren't necessarily reporting it in Infinite Campus, um, that then populates EduClimber from there. So that's been one of those things that we put a priority on with our, uh, with our building principals here. It's probably about halfway through my first year in the district because we had those conversations and, you know, I love data points and, like, okay, why does this building have none? And that, that kind of brought up that, uh, that conversation, so, um, so we made some adjustments for that.
I like that you standardized it.
Yeah.
Wasn't another issue that if you don't have, like, a consistent documentation, if you have an individual student who's got a chronic pattern of defiance, you're not going to see it. So you're going to discipline that individual as though this is a one-off and it's not.
Right. And you'll see some of that in one of the slides here shortly, too.
This, uh, this new system does track incidents per individual, which I think is helpful for discipline.
Yeah, so I pulled one of those graphs for us just to look at, so you know what we're looking at, too.
And being consistent with with tracking them is important for the student portfolio.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Uh, when we look at the major incidents, these are the the main ones that we have. Obviously, threats and gossip, which is an interesting way to phrase that. That that tends to be the biggest one, especially at the middle school level. You've got the the major drug and alcohol, tobacco, uh, pieces that's here where we've actually gone from a hundred and forty down to ninety-seven. So those, that's a pretty significant drop, which was nice.
What do you contribute that to?
It's a great question. That's a great question.
The search policy?
Part of it could be the implementation of the the handheld, uh, as well. Because, again, when we, when we first had to push that out to families just to let everybody know, you know, here's a new policy, here's a new tool that we're using, um, I I think students were a little bit more cautious, maybe, with what they were bringing to school with them.
Mr. Heath, where do, um, I've I've seen threats come up like a couple of times, but maybe in different contexts. So one thing we've been dealing with, certainly in our district a lot lately, but a lot of districts around Northeast Ohio and across the country are dealing with, you know, threats of active shooters, which is the front of the mind for literally every parent who sends their kids to school. So where do we see that reflected in, I I don't know if it's a minor or a major incident?
Yeah, they're they're typically all considered major incidents.
Major, okay.
And and again, that's, it's lumped in here. That's why one of those things, when we dig into the infinite campus data where you're getting the narrative pieces to the puzzle, we'd have some more clear data with that, and that that could be one that I can pull for us as well.
That would be helpful.
I definitely want to explore consequences around that, just because it's such a disruptive problem. And it's very scary for both the students, the teachers, and parents. You know, there was, there's a lot of panic, you know, parents keeping their kids home, and understandably so. I mean, it's a very scary thing. So that is something that's top of mind for me, for us to kind of dig into today if we can.
So you said major incidents at the middle school level are, I'm sorry, not major. I'm using different terminology. The most frequent incident at the middle school level is like the threats gossip.
Yeah, and again, yeah, that's such a large number when you look at that. What is it, four or five forty-seven and five sixty-three over the last two years? But being able to separate that out so that we know, okay, out of those five hundred and sixty-three, how many of them were actually threats versus, you know, how how many of them are just, you know, kind of a gossip-type thing and.
And the bigger issues at the high school are what, the most frequent?
Again, this is the entire district, so.
I know, I just wondered.
Majority is going to be there. From the the high school perspective, I I'd have to look again. I think it's, um, well, the number one piece is attendance. So like, you're getting into like class tardies, school tardies, hey, I'm going to take a period off, that sort of thing. That's, that's number one, but again, that's a minor incident, yeah.
Okay.
The the other two there, the physical aggression, physical injury, again, slight decreases there. That's where the the fighting, uh, has come into play. So looking at these numbers here, um, for those two sets of major incidents, that's where fighting lives right now, which, again, is one of those that I know we're taking a very hard stance on now.
Do you know how many individual people are involved? Like, is that a hundred and forty-seven kids? Thirty-eight kids?
Right.
Incidents, right? Repeat offenders.
Hold that thought, because we'll be right there with, uh, in a couple of slides. Really looking overall, over the last five years, major versus minor, um, you can see, um, in these charts, these are major incidents from the eighteen-nineteen school year. Here's COVID year, which is the little dip, and then coming back as we see those major incidents. That, that's one of those things where, you know, we we knew we were experiencing this. That data kind of shows, you know, what the perception and the feel is. You know, just coming back into a structured environment, uh, I think has been a challenge for for many students, and and we're seeing those major incidents kind of tick up. We did, uh, have a slight decrease there last year from a thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three down to nine twenty-seven in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Is the data, um, so that, those are incidents, that's not percentage per population? Because, I mean, we've also had a decrease in our enrollment, so.
Correct.
Okay.
When you look at the minor incidents, again, similar type of data that we're seeing there. The minor incidents actually have gone up a little bit more, and a lot of that is around, you know, some of the minor disruption pieces. Again, kind of dealing with some of that structural component of coming back into the the school district. That's why we see such a huge increase here from COVID year back into, uh, our first year back fully in the, in the buildings.
And the consistent reporting, so we may have fewer students, but we're reporting more consistently so that.
Correct.
But what about, because I'm worried with, you know, if I'm looking at major, these are major incidents on the left?
On the left, yes.
So I'm seeing, you know, pre-pandemic, we are, we are far above where we were pre-pandemic. There weren't any, I mean, that concerns me right there, because that tells me our kids are not okay.
And we have fewer students, too, so.
And in, I actually had this conversation with Governor DeWine when I went down and, um, he had, what, ten or eleven of our superintendents from around the state after he got re-elected last, last November, the November before? Can't remember. The years are running together now. Um, but anyway, one of the things that we brought up, just as a collective group of superintendents there, was, you know, we're not concerned about the the academic gap. And we're trained to to close those gaps, and I think across the state, we're doing that. Said what we're we're struggling with is some of the extreme behaviors that we're seeing now. You know, when when you've got, you know, elementary students that are, you know, just running down the hallway screaming, I, okay, we can deal with some of the minor things in the classroom setting, because, again, we've got classroom management skills, but some of these extreme behaviors are the things that we're struggling the most with. And i- if we can look at, you know, funding sources from the state perspective that will help us identify more, they're called BCBAs, you know, behavior specialists that can come in and work with our kids and identify, okay, here, here's, you know, some skill sets that we need to continue to develop in our kids. I know those are some of those supports that we need to to continue to have, and, um, we just don't have those right now.
Yeah, it seems like we are trying to solve post-pandemic problems with pre-pandemic solutions, like out-of-school suspensions, for example. And, um, it, I'm, it's just, it's timely, I'm glad we're doing this, but I, you know, I'm concerned when we talk about fu- like, funding, where, where is that funding going to come from? So practically speaking, I mean, I love the idea of BCBAs coming in, but what funding, um, revenue streams? Like, what are, what are you thinking in terms of how we can secure such funding when we're already pretty tight?
Well, and that's why we're asking the state for help on that. We don't have it currently.
Okay, and in the form of, like, are you, like, grant applications or?
Or just additional, um, uh, federal funds that might come in and being able to to kind of earmark those for, to to be dispersed around the state for those types of supports.
Is there state funding for for such things or?
Currently, we can use some of our federal funding coming out of CCIP for that, but oftentimes, that's already taken up by our academic needs. And we just, we need additional funding there to be able to to start supporting some of the behaviors.
Something we can advocate for in our upcoming meetings, for sure.
True.
Is it difficult to find those specialists as well?
Yeah, there's a, they, those people that are certified to do this are, uh, worth their weight in gold right now. We, we currently have one in the district, uh, does a lot of work over at CARES, um, and then does some work with, um, with a couple of buildings when she's able. Again, there are not many out there. But trying to get some of our best behavior teachers to maybe head that route would be another way to kind of build our own, so to speak. But again, I, though, it's a, it's a challenging set of criteria to get that certification, and, uh, and there just aren't that many out there.
I feel like this is a good s- point where we should talk about, you know, when we look at, I'm doing some research on it, and when we look at where that, I mean, I still think that the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen is pretty high, but not compared to now. Do you think it's, there are correlation between this soft, gentle discipline and these numbers we're seeing? And that we're not, we need, that brings us back to the old-school tough love, you know, stricter consequences? Because a lot of, a lot of the feedback that I hear, both from students and from teachers, is that we're being a little too gentle. We're not always, you know, we have, we have s- staff with bleeding hearts, and I think that's a wonderful attribute, and that's part of what makes somebody go into teaching and go into administration. But, you know, at the same time, it's not necessarily yielding the results that the kids need. Kids need boundaries. They need that, you know, this is the consequence, and and they need follow-through, and they take advantage when they know, oh, this teacher's not going to report this, you know, on buddies with this principal or, you know. I just think that that's an interesting thing when I'm looking at, you know, when you think, what is causing that increase?
Do we know for sure that that's what's causing it?
I was going to say, I think.
Yeah, I don't know that we know that.
The approach that you're describing as being, you know, maybe a lot of understanding and trying to talk it through, that goes way, way far back.
So that's not. Well, what I, what I do know is that a lot of, from teachers, a lot of teachers say, I just stop referring, because it doesn't, it's a revolving door, they just come right by, and there's no, there's no consequences or follow-through.
Well, and I think, too, even with the student dress code, um, I know we changed that, hmm, I think it was my first meeting I was in here, one of the first ones. Anyways, we changed the student dress code, and I think if we are going to have enforcement of dress code policy, I don't hear a lot from teachers that we are enforcing that, and I see it when I go in to the classrooms. You know, you see midriffs and inappropriate attire that is a violation of our policy. And I think if we don't enforce it there, it's just like, you know, if you've talked to a police officer, they'll say, well, we we enforce speeding tickets, because if we don't, then there's no respect that we're going to enforce a harsher penalty, you know, for a a larger crime. So I think if we were to, I think it's great to look into different things and see what we can do, but what can we do now that we wouldn't have to pay a bunch of money for? I think that would be one thing to just show right off the bat, hey, we are cracking down, we're going to start with the dress code, too, and start to crack down on that.
Mr. Heath, would, would it be okay to bring this to maybe like a building leadership team or, um, the the teacher level, like the, their PLCs, and just have them have a discussion of what they think the issue is? Because at different levels, it's probably different things. You know, when you have little kids that are acting out, it's probably not because they have a midriff shirt on, you know? Because they're different, it's different levels.
I don't think that's the point you're making.
Yeah, that's not the point I'm making.
They're not getting in trouble to break this rule, so.
But it's, it's also probably not because the principal's nice to them, and they don't have big consequences at an elementary level. It's probably because they don't have maybe support at home. They, maybe they haven't had an elementary experience before. Maybe they didn't have a preschool or a daycare experience, and this is the first time that they're in a structure. We don't know what kind of limits are placed on them in their home. I, I mean, I'm just, we could, we could talk about this all the time.
I should clarify, when I'm talking, what I'm, my examples are, I'm thinking middle school and high school. I mean, I don't, not that we don't have issues in elementary, but I think, right? Would you agree, Mr. Heath, is it, that's pretty under control in elementary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, they they have their own set of issues, too, with disruption, but, uh, but it's not at the level that we have at middle school and high school.
You had just mentioned kids, like, the need for BCBAs because they were, you know, running down hallways screaming. You know, there is just, there's a different need. We have, we have kids that are coming from different backgrounds now, that don't have the same support. Maybe there's, you know, drugs involved. So I I think it's, it would be great if we could say, well, if we're really hard on them, but but let's, let's let them, at the building level, maybe give us some insight onto what they need, and then we can try to give them those supports. Because I don't know, by just looking at this as its general district-wide data, to even break it down into something smaller, maybe what we do need to do is crack down on X, Y, Z behavior, but until we see that, or until we hear from them, I, I don't know.
I think that's a really good point, and I, I have some information. I did a little work and found a report on the latest Ohio, the state data. It was, uh, put out, a, a couple of researchers put together a report, uh, with the Children's Defense Fund. And so I can share that in a minute. I do want to see the rest of our data, but one of the recommendations the researchers made, based on the state data from this most recent school year, was to implement listening sessions, and I thought that was really wise. Listening sessions with teachers, um, with counselors, with parents, and with students, every stakeholder group, so that we could get a fuller picture, you know, not unlike what we did with the strategic plan, but we could get a fuller picture of where do these problems lie? You know, I know when we've talked with students directly, they're like, you know, out-of-school suspensions or just vacations, you know? So that's valuable information for us. If if teachers are saying, I quit doing referrals because they don't work, you know, we need to hear that. And I think that's, that listening sessions could really provide us with some of that anecdotal information that can help us do better here.
Well, we had asked for some of this information, Mr. Heath, and you were saying you were meeting with all, all of the, um, principals. What feedback are they offering? And in my, another question I had to go with that is, what percentage of time are are principals having to spend? And I'm talking middle and high school, on discipline, just this, you know?
That'd be helpful.
You know, are they overwhelmed? What, what kind of support do they need? Did you get anything back from that meeting?
So, a couple of things with this. Number one, I think there's a lot more conversation that needs to take place. As far as the percentage of time that the principals are spending on discipline, I don't know that, that number. That's something that we. That's something that we can definitely ask. We've, again, I don't want to blame everything on transportation, but we've spent so much time over there that some of the other things haven't, we haven't addressed yet. The other part to that, because the first part of your question was what again, Rose?
No, I forget my first part of my question. What, well, I said the what percentage.
What percentage?
And then, and then just what do, what do they need?
Okay.
What, you know?
And again, I, I think from the, the support standpoint, I, we've heard the, the behavior specialist term thrown around quite a bit. The other, the other thing is just making sure that they've got the support from the district administrative team because they get so much pushback from, from parents in regards to discipline. You know, we can ramp up discipline all we want, and, you know, then we're sitting through a series of appeals and suspension appeals and expulsion hearings and, you know, so we're just moving the, the, we're kicking that can down the road, you know, so to speak. And, you know, we're even experiencing that now with transportation. I, nobody wants to take no for an answer, and, you know, unfortunately, we just, we don't have the time or resources to, to be able to, to do what, what everybody wants us to do. Those conversations, I think, around some of the additional supports, I think will be valuable ones for us as we, as we kind of work through this now. The other group that I want to make sure we involve because this kind of led to some of the cell phone conversations back in last winter was with our, we've got a, call it District Mutual Problem Solving Committee. So it's some of the union, MTA, union representatives come together and meet with us on a quarterly basis just to review, okay, what's going on? What do you need support with? What do you need help with? You know, here's some of the things that we're needing to bring to the table that we need support with administratively. And, and really, that's, I think, what drove a lot of what we did back in, in January when we, we moved forward with this. So we can bring that, we've got a meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks that we can have that as one of our discussion topics too.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from that problem solving committee to see what supports they need at each level for behavior. And then if you mentioned that maybe administration doesn't feel supported, you know, with parental appeals and things like that, what kind of governance, governance support can we provide? Do we need to make stronger language? Where is the gray area?
That's what I, I was thinking too when you were discussing that. And then earlier, when you said we were going to move to man, like at least three day suspension, I've heard from parents that it would be really helpful too to have some kind of chart. So if, if we are going to say it's a mandatory three day suspension, at least if you fight, then I think we need to put that language into our policy so that parents, we can point to it, and they're not like, well, you didn't say it in there, so now I'm going to go ahead and appeal it.
And oftentimes, that's kind of hamstring administrators. That's the, you go back into the, you know, the late 90s, early 2000s, when I was first getting into administration, everything was, you know, okay, here's the book, you do this, that's what you get. And, you know, oftentimes, quite honestly, it wasn't fair. So that was one of the things that, you know, a lot of districts went away from those. Now, did we become a little too lax in certain areas potentially? You know, I think we, we see that with, with some of the, the threat components here recently too. And I know, you know, Mr. Wade has talked about, you know, when he was principal, if we had a threat, you were gone. You know, no questions asked. Yeah, you were expelled. So, you know, if we want to crack down to that level, we can certainly do that. But then we're dealing with all the parental pieces on the back end then too. So it, again, it's got to be that sweet spot in the middle somewhere. You know, can we have some starting points for some of the discipline? Yeah. And I, I think as things continue to ramp up, you know, second, third offense, I, our principals, I would say, are very good at, when you're dealing with some of these multiple offenses, they're cracking down pretty hard. You know, maybe that first time that, maybe it's a little softer than we would care it to be, but, you know, there are some things I think that we can ramp up that we've had some conversations about. That's why I shared some of that, you know, especially regarding the vaping, the fighting, and, and some of the bullying pieces.
There's also in the, in our, on page 16, it says, community service, you do it in conjunction with or in place of a suspension, which I've never heard us actually doing that. So I thought that would be also something we might want to look into, something that's already built into our handbook that we can maybe do that too. Because that's work. That's not, they're going home and sitting on line, playing on TikTok, you know?
And again, I think that gets into those, those alternative pieces in addition to the consequence that I think would be very valuable for us and, and really valuable for the community as well. And, you know, the kids are, are getting some experiential type learning while going through that too. And, you know, so I think there's a lot of value in that. And again, I, you know, that's part of my hope as we're looking at the big moves coming out of the strategic plan and maybe prioritizing our approaches to discipline. If there are some things like that that we can start to develop that we can then utilize, you know, even later on this school year, that might not be in place currently, but can we, can we shift some things around? Can we shift our practice enough to be able to, to support some of those types of programs?
We had talked in a couple of previous conversations that students who got a suspension, an out of school suspension, they used to have the rule that you couldn't make up any of the work. So there was a real severe educational consequence that good students feared, and maybe students who didn't fear that, that was another side of problems. But, I don't know, 10 years ago or so, that shifted, that, you know, you, you could make up the work and so forth. That's where, when we talked about having an alternate setting, a chance to not be at home, playing on video games or whatever, but that you'd be doing your work and then have an extended time where, let's figure out what's gone wrong, that you're this angry, you know, what can we do to help you be more successful in this setting, be happier, get along better with others, and, you know, maybe get your grades up? Because sometimes kids who get involved in that, a couple of days of missed assignments are the least of their problems, that they have a chronic pattern of poor, poor performance. So if we had that alternate setting where so over a period of 10 days, that they wouldn't be missing out, so it, it doesn't inconvenience the parent, because I can understand where for some parents, it's a hardship, or they let the student kind of be on their own, and that may not be a best practice. But if they're with us and we have opportunity to guide and interrupt those dysfunctional patterns and talk about what's, you know, whether we use our crossroads counselors or guidance, whoever could provide that.
Isn't this, doesn't this kind of, it sounds a lot like the restorative practice program that Mr. Heath described to us, I forget which meeting, a couple of meetings ago. You know, I, sort of identifying the, the problem that was caused and then moving to like, to bringing folks together to sort of repair the issue. You know, teachers can explain why this problem, you know, that was caused is detrimental to the classroom and their teaching, and then kind of identifying solutions. So, so that's kind of what it sounds like to me, and it seems a lot more constructive.
Ultimately, they're our responsibility to educate.
Yeah.
We want everybody to graduate and be ready for their future. So there's, when somebody's been exasperating with repeat offenses and they're causing all sorts of problems, I'm sure everybody's tired of it. But you're still looking at an immature mind, maybe less mature than the average kid, and that's why they're getting into so much trouble. Or there's other things at the root of it. If we could do a better job of interrupting that behavior and maybe moving them back towards success, it's a win for everybody. So I would, as a, as a board member, I would be 100% happy to authorize you to do whatever you need to do, whether we need to create space, hire staff to take care of those students and help them get back on track. I think that would be some of the best money we could spend.
I, I would, I would like to see kind of a mixture of discipline, but then also trying to, you know, help a kid if they're having emotional distress or whatnot, if there's a situation at home. I'm all for that. I do know there is some issues with restorative justice, restorative practices, so it would have to be, I would like to see that program, obviously, we'd have to vote on it. But we would have to be very particular with what we choose to make sure that it would be supported by community and family and all that.
Yeah, I think one of the things when we had originally broached the subject of, of exploring restorative practices, which again, is completely different than restorative justice, just to make everybody clear.
Very different.
That, we actually discussed having our board go through the training as well. There are some trainers through the ESC that we can bring in to, to do that. Typically, it's a two day experience where they actually go through the different, some of the de-escalation techniques, some of the questioning techniques, some of the, the meetings that take place, you know, when something first happens versus when they come back from a potential consequence that they've served. And again, the, the idea is to try, and I know we've had this brought up by all of you sitting around the table, well, did, did we have an opportunity to bring those two kids together to, to kind of resolve the issue? And that, and that's the ultimate goal out of restorative practices is to restore that relationship between those two students, or between a student and a teacher, or between two teachers. You know, there are, there are those types of components where you can ask the, you know, a certain set of questions to really kind of get to the root cause. How did it make you feel? How do we, how do we proceed moving forward so that, you know, there's a little bit of empathy that's generated amongst those participants, and you can move forward with a relationship? Oftentimes, the relationship wasn't even there to begin with, and I know we've had some examples of that too. But maybe going through that process, all of a sudden, a relationship does develop then too, that allows everybody to move forward in a positive way. So I think before we, we would go down that road at all, we would want to make sure that, that you guys have gone through that training too, so you're, you have a really good understanding of what it is before we would spend the money on, on doing that with. And again, I think as a starting point, we would do that as an administrative team. In a previous district that I was in, we, we worked through that with new teacher orientation, and then every new teacher coming in went through those two days of training before they even started teaching in the district. Now, that was because we had two trainers that were certified to do that training on our staff, so it was always free. So that, that's the reason we had that set in place. But again, I think that would be an important thing for, for us sitting around this table to go through that process and, and get a really good understanding of what that entails.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So the other thing that, you know, I would, I would mention too, as we're looking at those alternatives to suspension or in addition to suspension, you know, again, Ginny, I know you mentioned staff and space, and those are some things, again, looking at the strategic plan, you know, if that's going to be one of our priorities this year in those approaches to discipline, we can start having some of those conversations and start to develop some of those plans to, to share as well. And I don't know, maybe that's part of my goals.
Yeah. Do we have, kind of, along with our, you know, protocol for handling a disciplinary issue, do we have protocols for contacting parents and, and keeping them involved too?
Yeah, and anytime we have any sort of incident, there's going to be a phone call home to parents. I don't know if it's on this one. Just to go through a couple of slides, and then we'll jump into that, Maggie, because I think that's in the last slide that we have here too. Just as an example, this is one of the charts coming out of Edge of Climber. This is just Mentor High School, but this is the number of students that were involved in, more than 20 incidents is what we were looking at. So if you look over here on the, on the far left, this column here are all of those students at Mentor High School that had between zero and 2.5 incidents during the course of the school year. So 91% of the kids basically had nothing. And again, this is including all of those classroom tardies, tardies to school, and those are all incidents. So they had zero to 2.5. When you get all the way over to the far right, over here, we had five kids that had 15 or more incidents. So again, in the grand scheme of things, that's what, 0.2% of the population, but you've got those five kids. Okay, what are we doing for those five? Where are they? What kind of programs are they in? What are they involved with? Are they not involved in anything? Do we have them in the right academic program? Do we have a CTE program that they might be good for? You know, those sorts of things. You know, how do you engage those students to keep them involved as opposed to having this large number of incidents? Now, a couple of these kids, we can tell you it's because they were just late over and over and over and over and over again. But there are a couple that have had a variety of major incidents as well. So those are the ones that we need to focus in on. Again, you look at those first two columns there, again, you know, five or less is basically 95.6% of the students in Mentor High School are not having any issues. It's that 4.4% that we need to focus on.
Because that's worrisome, but it's manageable.
Right, I was just thinking that. I mean, that to me says, we need, I don't know, one or two folks dedicated to help these kids. And I will say too, the state data indicates, and I don't know if you have this, Craig, in your presentation, but I went ahead and looked up the state data, particular to our district, and it is reflective of the overall trend, which shows that the students on this far right end, or, you know, maybe up to the center here, typically are economically disadvantaged, typically are kids of color, and typically are going to need a different kind of support than perhaps the students on the far left, if that makes sense. And I don't know if that, I don't think you have that kind of demographic displayed in your, any of these slides, but would you say that's true?
No, not in these slides. And when we had our previous data compilation in Bright Bites, we were able to, to dig into that a little bit more. This one doesn't have the same types of charts and graphs because we actually, as an administrative team, every principal meeting pulled that information up because we were looking very, very closely at our demographics. Because at, at one point, we were disciplining our students of color at a rate of 2.5 times the rate of our white students. Economically disadvantaged students is another category that is, again, fairly high. Edge of Climber doesn't look at it the same exact way. We do have some demographic breakdowns that we can do. We may have to do some more calculations by hand than we did with the other data source.
Well, I was just looking at the ODEW website, and I pulled, so what I saw, and this was just this past year, it was exactly what I just described and probably would be on par with, well, we didn't use Edge of Climber for all of last year, right?
Right, right. No, it was about halfway through the year.
Right, half and half, right. I mean, but yes, I mean, they, black students and students who are economically disadvantaged were overrepresented, definitely in out of school suspensions, also in school suspensions for disobedient disruptive behavior. You know, all of, all of these areas, every single time, it was consistent across the board, so that tells me we're missing something here, and we need to, you know, really take a closer look at how we are supporting the students in those groups, so.
That, that's where I feel like this comes in, and when I say tough discipline, I do not mean I want to punitive, punish, punish, punish. But what you can, you can also find from that data is that those are also students who, a group that's represented that maybe doesn't have that, get that, get that strict discipline at home, all the more reason they need it in school. they need it in school, and.
I don't, how do we know that, though? How would you?
We can't rule that out, I mean.
Well, we can't say it's the case, though, either, can we?
I mean, we can try.
I think it's something we could explore further.
Yeah, it's something worth exploring.
I don't think we can make the rule for either situation and say economically disadvantaged kids are, you know, need, all of them need more help. I think it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. I think that, at least personally, I believe that we should be handling discipline the same, you know, so if, if we're saying fighting, you're out for three to five days, just because you have a different background, you shouldn't not be out those three to five days, but maybe you do need the additional supports as well.
Right.
I think it's a, it's a balancing.
Yeah, I think they need both. I think we have to, I think we need to have the follow-through and the strict consequence, but always followed up with that and with counseling and care and doing a deep dive. Craig, what do you, what is your thought on having a more focused, like a dean of students, something that's just one person or two people that are just focused on those, on student welfare, that probably would only end up dealing with some of the, you know, this up here, and that could, that could, you know, when you have a dean of students, it's proven they really get to know the students on a personal level, they get to know the parents and the situation, it just, it makes it easier to really dig deep and find out what's going on and how to help, and is that something that?
Actually, we'd probably even take it a step further, because we started to have some conversations about this as a district administrative team too, and how do we support our buildings with this? And we actually had a couple of our administrators last year that, when we started looking at some of this data, and we had those five kids over here, there were a couple of students with disabilities that were part of that group, and Mrs. Bowser, our director of student services, actually went to the buildings and started meeting with those students on a regular basis. And again, just having that additional layer of support, you know, do we have enough time to do that for, for everyone? No, not, but again, if we're focusing in on some of our, our neediest students from a, from a behavior standpoint, you know, having that connection with an adult and somebody that they can trust, I know, it was funny, because at one point, that, the one student that she went over and met with, went down to her counselor, it happened to be a middle school student, and she says, hey, when's that lady coming back to talk to me? And so she, you know, she did it two or three times, and then had that connection with that student, and again, somebody outside of the building that they, they don't necessarily have a, you know, a daily interaction with, but somebody else that's there to help support is another, another layer that we would look at. I've been in a couple of districts where we had, like, a dean of students, like, somebody that just focused on discipline. Again, it goes back to the individual person, I would say. I've seen it, seen it work in one district and not really work in another, and again, it's going to come down to that, that connection that you can make from a relationship standpoint with the kid too.
Well, I think our principals wear so many hats, so to have one, you know, person, I know, I know somebody personally that the behavioral issues went down because that student knows that they can go and pop in their dean's office and have a conversation before they erupt, before, you know, it happens, it's preventative, so I would, I would, you know, and our principals can't always be there for each one, because they've got, again, they wear so many hats, so that would be something, I think.
Do we have enough seats in our SUCIDE program?
Short answer is probably no, but again, you know, the underlying piece there is the staffing component too.
Yeah.
To be able to have the, the support staff needed to, to pull that off, but again, I think, you know, as we're looking at this approach to discipline, I think we have to reevaluate that too, and, you know, do we reallocate some staff members to these types of programs to be able to support the students in the way they need to be supported?
You know, and people have.
Not that we want to add additional staffing, you know, that would always be a, you know, a great thing to be able to do, but, you know, we don't necessarily have the funding for that, but how do we shift things around? How do we restructure in order to pull that together?
To prioritize.
Basically, that's what you're asking from the administrative standpoint too.
Right, right.
Okay, we've got unit principals that deal with student discipline most of the, most of the day, but, you know, we, they have teacher evaluation components, they've got, you know, some instructional components as well, you know, how do we, how do we look at that administrative team and allocate our resources effectively? Could always be one of those structures that we're looking at.
Because the person who does something like a SUCIDE program, that mentorship, that a person has to have a natural gift for that kind of work, because you can't create that or just assign somebody, you have to have an authentic talent in connecting with kids who may have very complicated issues, and if you can't do that authentically, it's a waste of time. So I've always been impressed with the people that we've had in that program, a little bit that I've been exposed, is they have a particular, it's empathy and insight and the ability to intervene and motivate a student who may be a pretty tough nut.
And how do we train those folks that are, that run the SUCIDE program? Because that would be my next question, is if we're going to reallocate, I'm glad you spoke for Mr. Wade, because I know he would say, well, the money's got to come from somewhere, so where, where are we moving it around? So very good point, but, so if we are going to do something like that, reallocate staff, how are we going to train them? Goes back to what kind of support do these kids need, whether it's, you know, the PBIS, you know, train, that was another question I had, is all, are all of our staff trained to implement PBIS across the board, but, you know, the restorative practice, you know, do we train them specifically on that? So how are we preparing those staff, those admins or whoever we put in place to, to respond to the needs of those particular students? So I'm, I asked you like three questions, I'm really sorry. So first was, how do we, are the SUCIDE staff all trained in the PBIS and interventions and restorative practice? I guess we'll stick with that question first. How are they trained? Tell me how they're trained.
So. How are?
Oh, I thought maybe you just, you don't know offhand, just kind of how.
No, so there, there are a couple of things I do know and a couple of things we'll have to ask about. Obviously, from a restorative practice component, they don't have that full training yet. Some of the training that they do have are the CPI training, where we're talking about de-escalation and restraint type components, so they do have that sort of training. They do the typical public schoolwork stuff that every teacher does, but that, you know, that gets into some of the, some of the behavioral pieces, but nothing that gets into probably the specifics that we need. Again, some of those individuals, kind of to Ms. Jessling's point a little while ago, is those people have a skill set that, you know, they've been identified for those roles and selected for those roles because of the skills that they possess, but, but again, I think a good point that you bring up is how do we continue their education to get them that, that set of skills, or develop new skills that will allow them to, to work closely with, with some of our, our neediest students there? Again, from an academic standpoint, it's there, from a behavior standpoint, that's, again, where.
Area of opportunity.
A lot of the, the training is lacking.
Okay.
Mr. Heath, is the SUCIDE, is the SUCIDE program a special education program?
Yes.
It is, so, so they're probably intervention specialists with that.
Correct.
With that license as well? Okay, all right.
I have some questions about our security guards. Are we, tell me, can you tell me a little bit about them and their role, and, you know, are we fully staffed in them, and are they the people that would guard outside the bathrooms? Can you tell me a little bit about?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we've got security staff here at the high school. We don't have it at the middle schools, it's just at the high school right now. Off the top of my head, I can't remember how many we have, but those individuals are, we typically will have one in the, in the, the safety booth at the entrance to the building that will check people in as they're coming in. The others are, are kind of walking throughout the building, you know, monitoring the hallways, a lot of help during, during lunchtimes, which, again, we, we start with brunch and go all the way through, you know, a late, late lunch now, so a majority of their time is spent in the student center, just helping supervise students there. We do have them checking around the restrooms, obviously, they're not going into restrooms, but they're going down towards, again, F-Wing and some of the other wings to the building, looking at restrooms, but, again, not enough staffing to actually have one person at each of the restroom areas in the, in the entire building.
Are they disciplinarians? Are they able to, do they have authority to write kids up, and if they see something?
Yes, but typically, their response is going to be to monitor and then get administrators there.
Okay.
Can you go over the, when you're, sorry, Rose.
Oh, I was, I was just going to say, is that, is that, you know, should we monopolize on our security officers and let them, maybe for minor infractions, and that's just so kids know, you know, that they're monitoring, they're walking around? I mean, I'm assuming they, they circulate up in, in, you know, the hallways, or are they always, I mean, is there a way, if they're mostly, because the lunch period is so long, is there a way to maybe make sure that they're, we spread them out? Because there's a lot of staff in the student center typically.
Yeah, and because typically, that's where our SRO and our off-duty police officer will also be down in that area during, during our lunchtimes as well, just, again, when you look at spaces, restrooms and the cafeteria, are the two spaces at the high school where the majority of the issues take place. So, again, they're, they're kind of strategically placed there, but I always go back to something one of the SROs in one of the previous districts I was in always said, and he's like, you know, if I'm in the same place at the same time every day, the kids know that I'm at the same place at the same time every day.
Right, and they take advantage.
So they're going to find a place where I'm not there. He said, if I'm able to, to move around to different areas or relocate myself on certain days, then you've got that element of surprise as to, hey, I normally don't see you here, why are you here now? And then, you know, that, that adjusts the behavior then too.
Even, and like, in what Rose was, was talking about with the security guards, when everybody knows that, you know, certain people are going to be the SRO and the off-duty are going to be in the lunchroom, maybe that's when the security guards can kind of go other places too, just to keep an eye out, so that people aren't like, oh, we know they're there, so we're going to go in this bathroom and.
And does security guards, I don't even know if you call them a security guard, but just do the security, do they have access to EduClimber to input things, to look at behaviors, to keep an extra eye, like, okay, we've got a repeat offender, this is what's going on?
Typically, that's going to come from the administrative team. I'm not sure what level of, what level they share that information with, with the security officers, and if there's, if there's an individual that has been involved in a few things, obviously there's, there's conversation around that. As far as digging into the data, I'm not sure it's at that level yet, but could be something that could be.
Or just can they report, you know? I'm hearing that this, you know, even, is there, in EduClimber, I know is all about reporting specific incidences, but, you know, is there a way to say, like, you know, there's been extra activity over in this bathroom? And no, you're not pinpointing a certain student, because nothing's happened, but maybe they're starting to see something.
Like an alert.
Yeah, some kind of, are they, or, yeah, the security team, are they connected somehow? That they can.
That's a good question.
I know, just they have the walkies probably, but I think the more, kids are wired that, like, they need the guardrails, and if they know that there, there's going to be, if they're going to be watched and there's, they're going to, they're trained, their brains are trained to like go find another area, so if we keep constantly moving and letting them know that there's a presence, I think all, especially the minor incidents will go way down.
I even think of like Dr. Hoynes when I was in Memorial, and she was the principal back then, and she'd stand by the door for the dress code, she'd stand, stood by the door with a ruler, because she, our code was it had to be somebody, you know, inches below your knee or somewhere around your knee, and I remember being like, I am not going to do anything, because she is, she was, you know, intimidating as a student and seeing her, I'm like, they're going to enforce that, they're going to enforce everything else, so I do think just having more presence, you know, helps.
Final slide that I have up here is just, you know, what is our response to behaviors? And again, this shows you everything in the district for last school year. Again, it's kind of hard to see all the wording on it, but, you know, I tossed out a couple of things here, and I'll point them out here to you as well. These first, these two bigger bars on this graph right now, these are some of the detention type things after school, so those are some of the consequences there. You also have this other big one right here, which is a lunch detention, so that's a pretty popular consequence. The one way over here to the right, this is a verbal warning, so those things are tracked in here as well. And then, I, I think the two that we've been kind of talking around the most, if you look right here, this group is out-of-school suspensions, and then, right here is our in-school restrictions, whether that's a period-by-period thing or a full-day thing, so we do keep track of that data, but you can see that we probably do twice as many out-of-school suspensions as we do an in-school restriction right now, based on that data. It was close to 400 out-of-school suspensions, 388, and right around 200 in-school restrictions for last year.
Do you have, like, an opinion on, if we were to start to implement more of the in-school restrictions, would we see that some of that out-of-school suspensions go down? Do you, do you feel like that's something that we could look into? Do you, what is your opinion on that?
I would, I would say if, if there were more in-school pieces to the puzzle, some of the, the out-of-school suspension would decrease.
Are you all, oops, sorry, go ahead. In those in-school restrictions, would you do no electronics? I mean, no, so that they're not?
Yeah, we'd have to set up what those parameters are, but, you know, you, you would want it to be a restrictive environment.
Right, just kind of make it a little bit more painful, as terrible as that sounds, but, you know.
I was going to ask, if anyone had heard of the SAFE Act from 2018, not the most recent one, the SAFE Act, Supporting Alternatives for Fair Education Act, it was voted in, signed by John Kasich, it feels like a million years ago, but 2018, and this, the intention behind this was to reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions specifically for, believe it or not, pre-K to grade three, and that's part of Ohio law now. You know, that's another thing we could talk about advocating for on a state level with legislators, but that is, I, I mean, it sounds like we're all in agreement, we would love to see our number of out-of-school suspensions go down, so I love the idea of coming up with alternative, you know, consequences, whether that's community service or restorative practices or whatever it is, but definitely exploring and being creative around that. But, but basically, you know, after the implementation of this law and the associated, like, solutions that they, they kind of attach to it, including the PBIS training of, of our educators, we did see statewide, of course, a huge decrease in the number of out-of-school suspensions, so I think when we have, when we involve our lawmakers, that is most definitely going to help us see success, but I think, you know, we can definitely do some things on our own here in our own district to help these numbers go down, because I think we can all agree, taking kids out of school is extremely disruptive to their education. Exclusionary punishment, it really doesn't serve them, whether we're talking about academics or social well-being, it's, it's not, it's not productive for, for anyone.
Or it's an inadvertent reward.
Or it's a reward, right.
Well, in the in-school suspension, it's actually, it's helping them behavior and academics, because there's going to be nothing else to do in that room, except homework or read a book, so.
Of course, we want to make sure that we have the staff available to support, and I know that's going to require additional resources, another thing we can advocate for with our lawmakers.
And the staffing would need to be possibly to more than one setting.
Right.
Because you could have two students that just fought each other.
That's right, that's right.
And you wouldn't want them.
Sure, sure.
We can also schedule, or report to a different building.
You know, you're taking yours on Wednesday, and you're taking yours on Monday, and sure.
You're doing community service the other day, I mean, we can get creative.
So I've got in-school restriction guideline staff space structures written down in my notes.
Yeah.
Page 14 does talk and speak to that bill on page 14.
Oh, good, 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 good.
Yeah, it's, it's. It talks about how pre-kindergarten through three is...
Yeah, so that's, that's built into all of our policies, too.
Yes, it's in our code.
The other thing that might be interesting to, to take a look at, too, is some of the expulsion language in there, because I know, you know, we've had some conversations around that. And most people think expelled, okay, they're never coming back again. What, and that's not the case. The most we can expel for is up to 80 days. So when we're dealing with an expulsion, you know, we, we will implement this to the fullest extent that we can. And in some of our recent issues that we've had over the last year or two here, we've, we've implemented those expulsions for up to 80 days. The other piece is, we also are required, even if we do expel a student with a disability, we are still required to educate them in some fashion. So that's the other thing that, again, we've looked fairly closely at, are what are some of those other alternatives out there for students that, that might be expelled that we also need to educate. So just as a point of clarification for everyone and everybody listening out there, that, that's one of those things that, that we have to abide by from state law as well.
Can you, on page 13 at the bottom, under D, it says, "Permanent exclusion shall mean the student is banned forever from attending a public school in the state of Ohio." That's very specific guidelines, then, right? That's not, like, expelling.
Yeah, and that's a student that is, that doesn't have a disability. There would be some very, very specific things, where you're talking, you know, bomb threats, those sorts of things. Yeah.
So it's in there that, that's a possibility, but it has to meet the Ohio revised code specific to, yeah, okay.
Which, again, tend to be fairly intense as far as trying to, to achieve that level.
Yeah.
Mr. Heath, I just want to applaud you and the staff for standardizing the way that things are reported, and such an increased level of information that helps us...
It does.
Much more nuanced, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, really drive our decisions. And I'm really interested in hearing how the building-level teams and the district problem, problem-solving committee, what ideas they have for us. And I, I don't mean in the nitty-gritty. I mean, like, the, the big ideas that we can, we can govern and, and, you know, create some systems around or look for funding for, you know, decide where we want to prioritize, because I know we are all really invested in the discipline piece, and, and you are, too.
Because it's a justice issue for all the other students. And when you look at the 95%, you know, they're doing what they need to do.
Yes.
You might make an occasional small mistake, but that's incidental. It's, you know, kids who have serious issues that become a danger to themselves and others, and puts their whole future in jeopardy, you know?
And remember that, that small percent that's, that's, that's creating the behavior issues, that does affect that large majority that don't do, that are behaving, following the rules, and emotionally especially, like, that's, that's something that's...
A perception of danger, a very poor example, you know? Yeah.
Yes.
So I've got two full pages here, but...
But I got one more, you know?
You got one more?
No. In the, you know, in our Code of Conduct, it says, you know, we have a zero-tolerance policy, but it doesn't define it. Is there, are we able to kind of define it more for people?
Is that a state, I thought that was like a state mandate, that we have to have...
To have that verbiage in there?
I think we do.
For violence, you mean, or threats?
Um, yes, for violence, specifically. Let me see if I can find it.
But there again...
Because people read that, and they have such a different, they're like, oh, zero-tolerance policy, immediately expelled.
Right.
You know, and that's not what, what...
So getting some clarifying language on what that is.
So if we could clarify it, yeah, just, so I want it to be...
And the special education law is fiercely complex and limits everything else. It, it's the most important designation. And so if a student's behavior is a reflection of their disability, well, that's another whole set of situations.
Not that we can't hold them to standards, though. They can...
Right, but, but that's where I think an alternate setting, so we have another option besides what we're doing now, where, you know, we maybe have not just a shot at protecting everyone else, but helping that student make changes so that they perform better. I mean, we're going to unleash them on the larger society...
Right.
Before you know it. So if we can't solve that problem, chances are, that problem is only going to get worse.
They're not employable.
Yes. And that's, I mean, that's really why you need both pieces, I think. You need the discipline, because out in the real world, you're not going to have a job if you continue that behavior.
Mom, mom can't call your boss and complain.
But we need to, you know, help them with the root cause.
So just to answer our question, it's Ohio Revised Code 3313 dot 534, policy of zero tolerance for violent, disruptive, or inappropriate behavior. So that's where we're going to find our description of what that means.
Description, yeah.
And I'll get us all that language, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So what are our next steps? So you have two pages of notes?
Right, do we, do we meet again?
I'll get all of this.
Yeah, can you gather the information that we asked, so then, like, can we do this again?
Yeah, we can either do another special session, or, you know, I can report out in, in our October meeting, during my superintendent report, just to rehash everything on these two pages, to kind of give us a, a little bit of an update. But I'll include some of that in board updates between now and then as well.
And I love the idea of, you know, involving those administrators who are on that delivery line.
And there, and there may be some other meetings after our October meeting, you know, that are scheduled, that I won't have the information for, for that just yet, but I know a lot of this stuff, I think we'll, we'll have that ahead of time.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Whatever.
All right, who's taking the second? Say, I love.
Sure.
Okay, so.
All right. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Cook?
Mrs. Payne.
I'm sorry.
I'm initiated.
Mrs. Payne.
See how hard this is for Bill?
I know, Bill. I'm out of practice, too. Mrs. Iavolo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marchesa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jessling? And the time is 8:36. Adjourn.